We'll begin with a roll call, Ms. Van Twyver.
Mrs. Oden.
Here.
Dr. Murataki.
Here.
Van Twyver is here, Mr. Halliwell. Mr. Mosher.
I'm here.
Mrs. Ziem. Ms. Hohensie, here. Mr. Kaufman.
Here.
Mr. Farrington.
Here.
Dr. Brown is here. Mr. Boucher is here. We have a quorum.
Now, we had a communication from Mr. Halliwell. He's out there in the rain somewhere, running a little bit late, but he plans to be here. Ms. Thomasetti is, I think, I don't know if everybody saw the email. She is attending the St. Paul's Advanced Studies Program, and so she's not going to be with us until, I think, the end of July. And Mr. McIntyre is attending Boys State this week. Moving right along, we'll continue with a prayer of Ms. Van Twyver, and then Mr. Mosher, if you'd lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance, please.
Almighty God, we have the high honor and the serious duty of managing the educational institutions of our beloved city. In our common endeavors, may we find a spirit of unity and understanding which will enable us to face our multiple problems with an objective mind, with justice and charity for all, so that any and all decisions made by us will be for the betterment and greater happiness of all of our fellow citizens. Amen.
Amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Does anyone have anything that they think needs to be removed from the consent agenda? Seeing none, all those in favor of approving the consent agenda say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the consent agenda is approved. Does anyone have anything, communications outside the consent agenda that they want to be considered this evening? Seeing none, public question and comment period. Thunderstorm seems to be keeping the public away this evening, or we'll just use that as an excuse. Superintendent's comments. Dr. Brown.
Thank you very much, President Farrington. Well, first of all, I'd like to acknowledge the board for the lovely gift to my left. It's very nice. I thank you for your kindness. This is my last meeting, and I had a chance to reflect on the last year and some of the things that happened, and I think it's one for the record books. At least, that's what I've been told. So I just wanted to go over a few things to remind you of the eventful year that it's been. Just about a year ago, almost to the day, a lady with this great southern drawl called me and asked me if I'd like to interview with the Nashville Board of Education. And I was riding my bike, and I thought, well, it sounds like interesting, so I'll give that a go, met you folks, and signed on a little bit later that month in July. So I want to thank you for that opportunity. I have met some incredible people here in Nashua. Among them, the board members around this horseshoe, teachers, kids. I'm thinking of the young man Kevin from South who gave me a tour, one of the first days that I was here. Ms. Norris, who is such a firebrand here from the Board of Education, and my neighbor, Aiden, who graduated with the class of 17. So it was a delight to give those kids their diplomas. It's been an eventful year. If you want to think back, back to September when we settled a contract with the NTU. That was a pretty remarkable event. Back in October, you may recall that the mayor asked us to give a status quo budget, and we were off with what that might have meant to the city and its schools, including laying off a lot of teachers or closing schools. Unfortunately, none of that came to pass. Regrettably and very sadly, in November, we had two tragic student deaths, you may recall, that were very sobering, both in this building. Followed quickly on the heels was a threatened bus strike, and that would have left 11,000 kids basically standing by the road. So that didn't happen, happy about that. We had two expulsions, you may remember those, one of which involved a loaded handgun. So that was another eventful thing that I had not had before. We also had an online video threat, if you might remember that. This one, I'm not sure, being from Maine, is an actual record, but we had the most snow days in the history of the district this year, with seven closed days. I had to deal with four grievances. We had an appeal to the Supreme Court regarding the privatization of custodial services. That was a first for me. I've never been to the Supreme Court before. And then there were some really remarkable things that I think are good, too. I am intending to take full credit for the 33 percent gain on the mean total for the SATs. I think that ought to be attributed to me. We can talk a little bit later about the piloting program regarding using dropout prevention grant money, and I think that has worked really well, and I'll share those stats with you. I'm really happy that I was able to stabilize Central Office, and I think you've got some great people coming in that will continue with that. As I said, I've met some amazing people, and I am, I'll just start crying if I start talking about all-day kindergarten, which is a first for the city. Some folks said it couldn't be done, but never been one to believe that. So, thank you very much, President Farrington, and to the members of the board. It's been my pleasure to work with you during 2016-17. Thank you.
Thank you. Board response to superintendent's comments. We'll start over here. Dr. Murataki.
Yes, thank you, President Farrington. I really want to thank Dr. Brown. There's a whole, long list of things, but the thing that I found most impressive was the full-day kindergarten idea, which I backed from day one. And I am very, very impressed that we managed to pull that one off. You know, my heartfelt congratulations. The other thing I wanted to mention, and this is almost amusing, is that thanks to you, I wasn't the only person with a funny-looking hat at the graduations that we had this past weekend. So that's always, I think, the happiest days are the, you know, the regular high school graduations and the special ed graduations. I had to miss those, but in any case, I was happy to be able to attend the graduations. And I was also grateful that there were seven board members that also attended both of those graduations, and I thought that was kind of impressive as well. I think that the mark of a board and its administration, especially the superintendent, the superintendent, even if you were only here for a year, you put your mark on the schools, and part of that is, in essence, seen by the graduates that we have. So again, thank you very much for your being here.
Response to superintendent. Mrs. Oden.
Yes, it was an eventful year, and maybe because of my age, I had forgotten a couple of those things, but I think all-day kindergarten, for me, having come from an elementary school teaching position, especially first grade, I think that is just a tremendous mark here in Nashua, and I am so glad we were able, or you were able, to get that into the budget. So thank you so much. Best of luck in your new endeavors. Thank you.
Mr. Mosher. Yes, I'd like to thank Dr. Brown for her presence here because it made the life on the board rather interesting, because you could come in for a meeting and you didn't know what was going to be happening. So there was an element of surprise, which was rather pleasant. But, you know, like Dr. Murataki said, you have made a mark on the district, which will be here for a long, long time. And we really appreciate the sacrifice that you make with your trip back and forth, just like I had to do for six years. And I'd like to just wish you well in whatever you put your hand to now, maybe just that you need a break to get away from Nashua. But I think that it was fantastic that you got on a bicycle and you rode around and looked at the neighborhoods and the roads and the communities, and you got the idea of what it was all about here. And like I said, I wish you well for the future. Thank you.
Mr. Kaufman.
Well, I'd like to thank Dr. Brown also for her time here. What the public doesn't know is we have tons and tons of meetings, and when we're in the negotiation sessions, there's even more of those. So you get to know people a little bit more personally than just interactions at the board level. So what I would like to tell the people about Dr. Connie Brown is she's an incredible hostess. When you come into her office area, there's always something to drink that's offered. You can almost depend, but you'll never know exactly what form of chocolate will be there, cheese crackers and things like that. And it really is very different from the way the previous administrator had that office and the way it was, for me, anyway, approached. So I really appreciate the added value that I saw when it came to the grievances, the union contracts, the detail that you provide and insight. And to young women out there and others who are inspired around math, Ms. Hohensie was a math major, Dr. Brown was a math teacher, and I can tell you, it really makes a difference. And that intuitive knowledge of the numbers, like Mr. Donovan has, I just saw him come in, is something you really want to assert yourself into, and it's that which I really want to thank Dr. Brown for, for finding errors in some of our math and assisting us greatly in that entire process. So thank you so much.
Excuse me. Mrs. Hohensie.
Thank you. I too will thank Dr. Brown for her time here. I think you missed one thing at the graduation. We had some greats, a handsprings. No one killed themselves. They did it with a cap and gown on. I was really, really impressed, three of them. I was counting. I was hoping there would be more. And I also think that it's very appropriate that we have Keno kindergarten, given that we've got board members doing a little bit of gambling on termination times and meetings with the superintendent. Now, I think gambling is a good way to fund a lot of things. Thank you.
And we want to make sure it was mentioned, but Mr. Donovan did brave the thunderstorm out there, doting between the raindrops, and he's here with us, and so I think he should get credit for that. Thank you very much. Would you like a comment? Okay, go right ahead.
Dr. Brown, I want to thank you for your service. You've had a remarkable year, and you've had a lot of challenges, and you did an excellent job for coming into a district this size with this board. It's been a pleasure watching you operate. It really has. I just can't imagine, well, anyways, I wish you well, and I know, I hope we hear from you again on a regular basis.
Mr. Halliwell also braved the weather.
It was nice and sunny until I got here. I don't know what that means.
We'll let you catch up. You can have any comments you'd like at the end, if that's okay with you. We're just at the response to the superintendent's comments. And I'm going to save mine till the end. I want to see how this meeting goes first, before I have anything to say. So we're at the, oh, actually, what I wanted to do, if there's no objection, I'd like to move the HR Committee report up to this point. We'll do that as the first committee, so that a couple of people are waiting to hear the results of the vote on positions this evening, and so I thought it'd be, if there's no objection, we'll move that up there. And we're doing the report this evening. We have a guest, Representative Dr. Murataki.
Yes, thank you very much, Mr. President. The HR Committee moves the full board to approve the nomination of Maria Alsop as principal of Sunset Heights Elementary School for the 2017-2018 school year at an annual salary of $93,250.
Seconded by Mrs. Hohensie. Is there any discussion? All right, so all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes. We have a new principal. Congratulations to her.
Thank you, Mr. President. The HR Committee also recommends to the full board that it approve the nomination of Jason DeCine, Assistant Principal of Penningchuck Middle School for the 2017-2018 school year at an annual salary of $90,500.
Second.
Seconded by Mrs. Oden. Is there any discussion? All those in favor of this motion, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, motion passes. We have a new assistant principal. Congratulations to him.
And, Mr. President, the HR Committee also recommends to the full board that it approve the personnel recommendations of June 26, 2017.
Second.
Seconded by Mrs. Hohensie. Is there any discussion? Mrs. Oden.
Could I ask for a roll call, please?
Sure.
Thank you.
Any other discussion? The motion is to approve the personnel administrative recommendations presented on June 26, 2017. Roll call, please.
Mrs. Oden, abstain. Dr. Murataki.
Yes.
Van Twyver votes yes. Mr. Halliwell.
Yes.
Mr. Mosher.
Yes.
Mrs. Ziem.
Yes.
Mr. Kaufman.
Yes.
Mr. Farrington.
Yes.
One abstention and six, seven? Eight, nine?
Seven.
Seven. Seven, zero.
Okay. Motion passes.
No, it was one abstention.
I said that.
Yeah. Seven affirmative, one abstention. Yeah. Did that conclude the HR? Dr. Murataki, you have anything else from there?
No.
Okay, thank you. So moving back up. Ms. Halliwell, you have anything on the Budget Committee?
Nope. We adjusted the budget for that $100,000. Yeah.
Smooth sailing from here.
Smooth sailing from here. No issues, I'm sure.
Okay, how about Finance and Operations?
Do you have a paper copy of the agenda that I could have? I couldn't stop at home and get my...
David. David.
Yes. There's no objection. I'll start with the June 13th and go back to the table motion, if someone wants to remove it from the table. Recommend to approve the Title I lease at the First Church in Nashua for a total of $46,152 to be paid for title with Title I grant money.
There a second?
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Kaufman. Any discussion? All those in favor of approving the lease with First Church at a cost of $46,152, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, motion passes. Ms. Halliwell.
Move to approve the request for additional janitorial equipment as outlined in the memo from Sean Smith dated June 7, 2017, in the amount of $41,903.99.
Second.
Seconded by Mrs. Hohensie. Is there any discussion? Mrs. Oden.
I guess, having been in the classroom and seeing the impact of stripping the floors and re-waxing them, I'd just like to know, when they get these new machines, if they don't strip the floors this summer, during Christmas vacation, will they put an extra layer of waxing where they'll have these machines down? Because the floors take a tremendous beating in the wintertime.
I have a vague recollection of something in that conversation about a change in their practice regarding stripping of floors, but I can't.
Yes, it's a change in the process, but I don't know the exact new process. It was just mentioned that there's a new process. Basically, it's top scrubbing as opposed to strip and re-wax.
It may be, did you look at the attached documents? Was that included in that?
I read about the fact that they're not going to strip, they're going to redo, and that's my concern, protecting the floors. I don't want to be penny wise and pound foolish, but it would be nice if over Christmas vacation, because they used to do it at some schools, it would be nice if they put an extra layer of wax on to protect the floor, especially if it's a bad winter from the salt.
Yeah, I think that, my recollection of it, it's a new approach to maintaining floors and a new technique, but I don't want to go too far down that road because I'll be embarrassed quickly. Why don't we ask, Ms. Halliwell?
Yeah, so I was just going to say, we can ask Mr. Smith to outline exactly whether this, I mean, he was confident this was a better process than the process they had. The equipment that they would use to strip and re-wax does not work anymore, and they are spending more, they're basically spending this kind of money in order to refurbish them. So we can certainly ask that question. I'm not sure it should hold up the motion.
Why don't we ask, can we ask Sean to send out a memo to the board as just a brief explanation of what it is, and then everybody will know?
And specifically, if he thinks there's going to be another, would they do another waxing if...
Right, to protect the floors. Mm-hmm. Thank you.
I'll ask.
Okay. Anything else? Okay, the motion is to approve the request for additional janitorial equipment as outlined in the memo from Sean Smith dated June 7, 2017, in the amount of $41,903.99. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, motion passes. Ms. Halliwell.
Move to approve the contract for services with ABC Physical Therapy in an amount not to exceed $220,946.
Seconded by Mr. Mosher. Is there any discussion? All those in favor of approving the contract with ABC Physical Therapy, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, motion passes. Ms. Halliwell.
Move to approve the contract with Clark Associates in an amount not to exceed $779,054.
Seconded by Mr. Mosher. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of the contract with Clark Associates, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, motion passes. Ms. Halliwell.
Move to accept the Colleen Darwish Scholarship Fund. If I get a second, I'll...
Second.
Seconded by Mrs. Hohensie. Ms. Halliwell.
So we're basically approving, allowing them to set up the fund, so the fund does not exist now, the board. I don't know that it's strictly necessary that we approve it. Correct, Mr. Donovan?
Yes, typically, the Board of Education accepts it, and then it's managed with the other scholarship funds, which is done by the treasurer at the city.
Okay. Thanks.
Okay. Anyone else? All those in favor of accepting the Colleen Darwish Scholarship Fund, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, the motion passes. Ms. Halliwell.
Move to approve the May FY17 transfer report.
Second.
Seconded by Mrs. Hohensie. All those in favor of approving the transfer, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, motion passes. Ms. Halliwell.
Move to take from the table a recommendation to approve technology purchase outlined in Mr. Farranco's May 9 memo, using FY18 funds not to exceed $435,000 and to approve a $415 monthly increase for 1 gigabyte per second internet capacity.
Second.
Seconded by Mrs. Hohensie. The vote is to, the motion is to take from the table. All those in favor of taking the motion from the table, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, motion passes. Move to approve.
Sorry, that's the motion, so that's the motion that's before us, is to approve it.
Discussion?
Yes.
Dr. Murataki?
Oh, I'm sorry.
Yes, thank you very much. I have no doubt that this equipment is needed. My only concern in the back of my mind is that, you know, with the approval of full-day kindergarten, do we need to reserve funds for that? Can we afford to go ahead and pass this in a vote tonight? Or should we hold off? That's my only question. I just, I don't know what the answer to that is, so if others could enlighten me, I think that would be appreciated.
Ms. Halliwell, do you have something? Ms. Kaufman?
I'm sorry, I can't speak to your question. If someone can speak to Dr. Murataki, his inquiry, I'll reserve my comment, just to keep the conversation on point.
Okay.
Ms. Halliwell.
So my comment would be that if the intention is to wait until we start full-day kindergarten, then in all likelihood, these purchases won't be made or won't be effective because we won't be able to, typically, he purchases equipment as soon as the budget is finalized at the beginning of the next fiscal year, so that he can do all this work over the summer. And I will point out that we've lost at least two key staff members, maybe three, in that IT department, so I think they're going to struggle to get this done to begin with. So I guess I would say, no, we shouldn't wait.
Thank you.
Mrs. Hohensie.
Thank you. I agree, we shouldn't wait. My only question is, do we know where the extra $25,000, $26,000 is coming from in the budget? If it's over the cost of what we allocated? That was my only question.
Well, it's still within the equipment budget that Mr. Farranco has for the year. It's just, for these specific line items, it's more than that, but he'll just have to...
Move money around.
Move money around within his own budget, so he's not taking it from anyone else other than his own equipment budget.
Thank you.
Mr. Kaufman, did I see your hand?
Yes, thanks. I just, okay, so, and I trust Mr. Farranco...
Excuse me, just, if you're going to go another direction, I don't...
No, I wasn't.
Oh, okay. Go ahead, then.
I trust Mr. Farranco to move his money around. He does a very, he's very discriminatory about that, but I'm just concerned, given the presentations we've had on it, and we, certain expectation level of certain things to be done, but not knowing, now realizing he has to exercise more flexibility than we might have thought, would his decision impact something else? For example, and this is a little bit of a digression, but it goes back to our request to get a survey from the parents to understand their equipment needs. Had we had that survey, we would have been able to maybe redirect some of this money if we needed some access points for some of the schools or whatever. So I don't want the board to lose sight of the fact that that survey that we've spoken of, that got delayed, that's being implemented through other means, I believe that has critical data to us, the survey that deals with how, what kind of equipment do our students have at home, connectivity, because we're making all these commitments for the bandwidth, and we don't really know what our bandwidth requirements are. And investing, yeah, you can always add more, but is it, why is this use of money? Maybe we have capacity, and I'm curious if anybody on the board has, I know I have spoken with Mr. Farranco about this, but about the capacity of the network, and if we can, if this is critical stuff or it can be deferred. And I understand the need to do it over the summer, but I'm just curious.
I think that, as I recall, the IT department uses their summer help a lot in the getting this stuff up to speed and distributed around the district. Ms. Halliwell.
So I don't disagree that the survey still needs to happen. I don't think this purchase over the summer is the breaking point. Mr. Farranco hasn't given any indication. I think the only indication he's given, that if everybody brought a device to school all at once and tried to get on the network, the network would not work. It would be too slow, or at least it would be pretty strained. But I don't think we're anywhere near a one-to-one device. He's given no indication that we're increasing the internet speed. I mean, he tends to manage these things as he knows he's adding equipment, so I'm fairly confident from the conversations, when he was at the Finance Committee presenting this, talking to him after that, that this isn't the breaking point. I mean, I'm happy to co-sponsor the motion to make sure that it gets done in the fall, but the survey, because I do think it's very important.
I'll absolutely support this. I'll absolutely support this. Believe me, I want us to have a functioning infrastructure. I don't want to disrupt things midstream, but I, this will be my last vote on an infrastructure item like this, unless we have some kind of an understanding of what our bandwidth requirements are, what we have, a projection of what the needs are going to be. Because if we don't know where we are, where we're going, is this a Band-Aid? Is this a finger in a dike? Or is it really extra capacity? We don't know. So I think investment is important, and I'm all for it, but I want to know why. And without an understanding of the network and its requirements, I'm just saying, I'm not going to be, I'll support it tonight, but in the future, I'll be asking... why. And without an understanding of the network and its requirements, I'm just saying, I'm not gonna be, I'll support it tonight, but in the future, I'll be asking a lot more questions.
Well, watch me talk like I know what I'm talking about. It seems like, was it last year that they did some work to expand the bandwidth available in the district? And I think in the last couple of years, we did a lot of work in our individual schools with access points, both at the elementary and the secondary level. So, I think that there's been work done. I, I'm not in a position to say that it's adequate for a one-on-one situation, but I think there has been, and I think it's probably something that we, we can review. I think we're gonna be talking IT for a while because of the positions that need to be filled and all. But, Mr. Boucher, did you have anything you wanted to throw in here? No? Mrs. Oden, I'm sorry.
Yes. Looking at the kindergarten, the full-day kindergarten sheet from Mr. Boucher, at the, on the last page, there are outstanding issues. And the first one is what concerns me. We anticipate that some additional paraprofessional support will be needed. This is for full-day kindergarten. Principals will pursue this issue with the incoming administration. One's actual enrollments are known. Should we need, and I asked about this at an early meeting, we didn't add paraprofessionals to the budget. Should we need more paraprofessionals for our full-day kindergarten? Where will that money come from?
Who wants to go? Mr. Boucher?
This, we've brought this issue up a couple of times previously. The, the main source would be the money that was originally intended for busing. It's 50-plus thousand, Mr. Donovan, which is still in your budget. Suggestion would be that that would be repurposed for the, for the paraprofessionals. And the exact number of paraprofessionals is not known at this point. They've talked about two, 2.5. Once the enrollment's settled, you'll have a better idea of what the specific number is. But, the 50 is more than enough to cover any additional para support that you would need for kindergarten.
Eighteen thirty-six. What's a para go? About 18,000? Anybody know what a...
Beginning one's closer to 15, 16.
16. Okay, so, we could get three paras from that. Okay.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
All right. Anyone else on this motion here? Okay, just so everybody knows, what we're voting on is to approve the technology purchases outlined in Mr. Farncoff's May 9th memo using FY18 funds not to exceed $435,000, and to approve a $415 monthly increase for 1 gig per second to improve internet capacity. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion passes.
That's it?
That's all, right? Committee on Policy, Ms. Van Twyver?
Thank you. Policy Committee met on the 20th of June, and we had a very short meeting, not as short as some, but it was short. And we had four policies that we were looking at. One did not come forward. The first one was a brand-new policy on cellphone. And it's entitled a cellphone policy, policy DKD. It's a brand-new policy. It has three options on how an employee can take advantage of a cellphone, and what responsibilities they have, and what responsibilities the district has. The chair recommends approval of DKD as amended, or as presented.
Second. Seconded by Mr. Mosier. Is there any discussion? Mr. Hallwell?
Under the, under the recipients of the allowance shall understand that, and the one item that's left remaining there, comply with any reasonable request for billing records and usage, use, usage information. For what reason?
Ms. Van Twyver?
What's the rationale for...
Whatever the, who, chief operating officer?
Mr. Bolton.
Mr. Bolton?
It was a legal recommendation from Mr. Bolton.
Anybody wanna throw this dead air here? Mr. Donovan, you wanna give it a shot?
I mean, I'm just reading the copy I have, and that's crossed out, and the copy I have, that's in the packet.
It's underlined in the...
No, it's not. It's there on page two.
Page two?
Oh, on the, on the page three, it is, okay, not on page two. All right.
I guess I'm, what are, what are we attempting to verify? That they have a phone?
Well, I would assume that the charges are correct. I don't know.
I mean, you're giving, so they're using their own phone, correct?
Correct.
And we're giving them a monthly allowance...
Correct.
...to offset that cost, because they're gonna use it for work purposes. I don't understand, I don't understand the request.
Are you referring right to the very top of the page?
Yep.
Yeah, okay. Ms. Hall, I'm sorry, Ms. Kaufman, did you have your hand up?
Well, I, yeah, I kind of, I wrote the policy originally that went to the committee. I have an extended comment I wanna make, but I will say that, that was from the recommendation from, as I recollect, recommendation from Mr. Bolton, and that's why it's there. And it has, and I think there's also a statement somewhere that says it, recipients also agree to the other policies that the cities have, the city has around these kinds of things. Responsible, I swear, I'll have to find it. I mean, if there's a question, you may just wanna wait and have that clarified by Mr. Bolton.
And just for the community, if you happen to be watching, the, Mr. Bolton is the City Corporation Council, the attorney for the city. Did someone else have their hand up over here?
I do have a comment on the policy.
Okay, we're, all set on your question?
For the moment.
For the moment. Ms. Kaufman?
Thank you. Okay. This'll take a couple of minutes, but it's not that long. The need for the, for this policy became very clear to me during the 2016 budget review cycle, when I observed that the cellphone line item in the budget was increasing by 10% a year, and was now $33,000. This seemed excessive to me. Therefore, I did some research and wrote a policy proposal, and submitted it to the Policy Committee in October 2016. That's right, nine months ago. Getting this policy to the board has been a lengthy and contentious process. Given the proposal content before the board, I have to say, it's not worth the time, effort, and money expended. On a competency-based grading scale, key parts of it would fail, namely, its missing reimbursement amounts, and a board policy compliant approval process. Hence, my recommendation that this be voted down and sent back to committee, which in a way, is the board's version of recovery. This cellphone stipend is not a perk. It is a cost of doing business. It's in place because the administration did not, and does not, have a documented process to ensure emergency contact with directors, principals, and senior administrators. After the last meeting, it finally occurred to me that in this case, the administrators who benefit financially from the policy should have no voice except on the details of its implementation. To be involved otherwise would constitute a breach of ethics. At the end of the day, it's the board's decision based on its needs that determines, number one, if there will be an emergency cellphone stipend. Number two, what options will be offered. Number three, how much money would be paid for those that choose to use their personal phones. Number four, who's eligible? And number five, to establish terms of use. Many times on this board, you will hear it said, usually by Mr. Farrington, that I attempt to micromanage administrative functions. In this case, intervention was needed, as there was limited and undocumented administrative oversight on the expenditure of $33,000. The fact that this policy was in committee for nine months shows we need training for all our committee chairmen. I could say a lot more, but I won't. I ask my fellow members to vote against this proposal and send it back to committee to fix its deficiencies. Thank you.
I would like to move to restore the paragraph in blue on page one, which says, as of January, well, it would have to be October, or September, August, I guess is the beginning. August of 2017, the allowance will be $25 a month for a mobile device smartphone, or $17 a month for a cellphone. This allowance does not constitute an increase in base pay, will not be included in the calculation. A percentage increase to base pay due to annual raises, job upgrades, or benefits based on a percentage of salary, et cetera.
Second.
Okay. Mr. Hallwell?
Mr. Donovan, if, is this technically possible? So, if the $25 is being paid as a stipend, does that normally get wrapped into someone's salary?
It doesn't get wrapped into salary. It's paid once a month. It's a separate line item. You can change the amount. My opinion on changing amounts, this is more of a budget question than a policy question, the dollar amount, but that's just my opinion.
Is, and is this the current amounts that are paid?
No, the current amount is $40 and $20.
Thank you.
And just by the way, a number of people have dropped off receiving the stipend because of the nine months, let's say, and the things that were written in this at one point in time, i.e., you'll give up your right to privacy. So, the 10% increase a year, it would not be an accurate number at this point, since many people have dropped off.
Ms. Van Twyver?
I have a question about how often the rate changes from year to year. I mean, you...
We've never changed the rate. This has been the rate since it was put in place about six years ago. Prior to that, we had phones, and we gave the administrators phones. That was very difficult to manage. Took a lot of time to review all those records. The phones, people didn't like carrying two phones. The phones we had didn't work well in the schools. This was a much better solution for all those involved.
I guess what I was asking was, how often does the rate change, the cost change from year to year?
It's never changed.
It's never changed?
It's always been the same.
Not the rate in here, not that the reimbursement rate, but when you go out and get a, I guess you buy them all at the same time, a package for these people, has a great...
No, these are, these are stipends. So, people get a stipend.
All right. Thank you. Sorry. I, I am opposed to putting the actual rate in the, in the policy, because then you have to change it in case it goes, you know, you're not gonna give them as much, but...
Mr. Hallwell and Mrs. Hoence?
So, instead of $40 a month, we're gonna drop it to 25. That would be the result of this. And for the, you know, from 20 to 17 for the regular cellphone, I guess I'm confused, because my bill keeps going up, so I'm not really sure why we think $25 is the right amount. Mr. Donovan, do you have any indication? I mean, I know staff, looking at some of this language, and glad to see much of it was crossed out. I assume we'd have more people decide this isn't worth their effort if it goes to 25 than opposed to 40?
Well, that remains to be seen, but possible.
I guess my side comment on this is that my, my company gives me a phone, and I believe they get a lot of money back, because I'm constantly responding to emails over the weekend, and I know I've had staff do that when I've sent out an email. So, I, I don't, I don't know, without any analysis as to why going from 40 to 25 makes any real sense, I'm not sure, I'm not in favor of it.
Mrs. Hoence and Mr. Kaufman?
Thank you. I think it makes sense to have a dollar amount in it. We can discuss whether or not 25 or 40 is the right amount. But, for the general public, this is the only way they'll have transparency, to know what the district is reimbursing our employees for, for a cellphone. Otherwise, they have a conglomerate number, 30-something thousand. They don't know how many phones are out there. There's no transparency at all. So, I don't think it changes that often. I think this is a, a big step to helping the public understand what we pay. So, in that sense, transparency is beneficial to us. I don't see the cost as going up. I think we get more and more bells and whistles and features on our phones, but I know seniors can get a phone, a, a straight phone for $17 a month, a smartphone. You're, this isn't their entire phone bill. They are augmenting their phone, helping them use it for emergencies, but they still have this phone. They can carry some of the cost, thank you, as well. So, I don't see this as unreasonable, because I think, I, my kids pay for a smartphone, it's about 35 a month.
Mr. Kaufman?
Thank you. To Mr. Hallwell's question about the, the amounts that are in the policy, I, when I first proposed the policy, included those amounts. They were also fashioned after the city policy, of which this is largely a copy, with some changes. The primary change is the amount. Given last year's budget discussion was very, was made very clear at the time that this was for emergency use, it's intended as an emergency-use phone. It's not, perhaps in your situation, where you're conducting business and things like that. This phone's support for the number of people is, as discussed to this board previously. I mean, the superintendent's and some other people, it might be an exception, but of the 78 people currently receiving the stipend, an assistant principal's not getting a lot of emergency calls or doing a lot of business on it, it was intended for emergencies. So, if I'm going, my rationale at the time is I'm going to give somebody a stipend for an occasional use of their phone, and as Ms. Hoence just referred to, you can get a fully capable, you know, text, voice, and bandwidth data for $40 a month. So, I just don't think that we should be providing someone with the cost of a free phone for emergency use. So, that's why the $17 and the $25 were in the original proposal. There, it's not, people are, it's not intended for people to conduct business. It's intended for emergencies, which is what we were told last year.
Just one quick point, Mr. Hall, before we go to you. My recollection is that, what'd you say, nine months ago, when this first started around, that this pretty much mirrored the city's plan, with the exception that the rates were different. Mr. Donovan?
Correct. The city's rate is $50.
Okay. Mr. Hallwell?
Excellent additional point. Thank you. Is that in fact the case? So, the intention was for it to be used for emergency communications? Is that in fact what ends up happening? Or are other things done with those phones?
Many, many other things are done with those phones. It's also with a phone, any phone you get today, other than a flip phone, you can read emails. So, if you need, every Friday, when I'm approving the principals and the administrators' time cards, and they're missing a punch on a certain day, I can send them an email. They can respond via their phone from their home or wherever they are. They don't slow up the process. Most people that have these have their email on the phone, and they read their emails each and every day, whether they're at work or not. So, it's not simply an emergency phone.
Right, and that, I mean, I think that's the point. The point is...
It's how we do business.
The company gives me a phone primarily because I travel, but also because if they need to get ahold of me, they can. But, the end result is, I'm carrying that phone with me, and I'm conducting business, when I probably shouldn't be conducting business, because it's my own free time, but it's easy enough to do, so you do it. So, I, I'm, again, not in favor of it.
I will side here. Mr. Mosier, and we'll come down the line. Anybody that wants to talk?
Thank you. I see too many problems with this policy, and I will not support it. And when it comes to a vote, I want a roll call.
Okay. Man up for your words. Mrs. Oden?
I, I don't, if, if the city has the amount, the monthly stipend, I don't see a...
a problem with us having the amount. I, I'm looking at, um, the $15 difference for 78 people. I think it comes to a little over, um, $1,000 a month, $1,100. I, um, I don't know, because I'm not a big cellphone proponent, but I do know people use it, and if there is an emergency, they've got to have it. I've seen, I've seen principals on a playground, emergency with a child, somebody coming through the playground, so absolutely it, it is necessary, and, uh, I don't see any sense of people having two phones. I think that would create a problem. They might grab one phone, and it's not the one that they need for school. So, you know, um, I, I don't want to nickel and dime this. I want to be fair to people, uh, but I don't ha- have a problem whatsoever of having the amount in the policy, uh, if that's what the city does, no.
Just for my own information, we currently give them how much? Just so I can keep the numbers straight?
40.
And the city allows 50?
Yes.
And this proposal is to reduce hours to 25. Is that, is that the correct numbers? Okay. Uh, Ms., Mrs. Hohensie?
Thank you. I'm open to a, a friendly amendment, to change the, the dollar amounts, if, if the board feels that a different dollar amount should be there. My main goal is to put it in the policy and to make it transparent for the public and for the employees. It, it should be one place they go when they, they get the information they need.
Mr. Kaufman, did you have something?
Yeah. Yeah, when I made the proposal on the amount, it was with the understanding, which was the discussion last year, that it was largely for emergencies, and that people, with few exceptions, and I can imagine some, are, would be conducting more business. Um, if you want to, I'll, I'll just ditto what Ms. Hohensie said. Without amendment with those changes, I will not support it.
Mr. Hallwell?
Uh, move to further amend, to change the amounts to, from 25 to 40 and 17 to 20.
Sorry, say it again?
Move to further amend, to change the amounts from 25 to 40 and seven, and 17 to 20.
Second that.
Seconded by Mrs. Hohensie. Okay?
May I ask a question?
Sure, go ahead.
Mr. Hallwell, is it your intent that the, this language, the rates that you've just suggested we amend to, would be included within the policy as part of the policy and documented therein?
I'm amending the amendment to change the numbers to 40 and 20.
Okay, so your amendment was to put this back in?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you very much, sorry.
So, just so I can keep track here, so is this where we are now? What do we do, currently do now, 40 and 20?
Yes.
So, we've got nine months of debate, and we're back to where we started?
Well, we didn't have a policy.
We didn't have a policy.
Oh, okay.
There was no administrative procedure.
Oh, okay. But I mean, we're, we're back to our prac, we're, where our practice was.
Yes, we didn't have a written policy.
Okay, okay.
We had a procedure in place that I would deal with each of the individuals, but it was not written down. That is correct.
Okay.
Are you going to read, um-
The amendment?
Yeah. And, um, Mr. Mosier's, was he doing roll call on the amendment or the main motion?
He wanted on the main motion, I believe.
The main motion.
Yeah. So we're at the secondary amendment, I guess we would call it, and it is, uh, just for clarification, correct me if I'm wrong, the language would, at the bottom of page one, that, in the blue that is crossed out, would be reinstated to read as of January 1, 20-
August 1?
August.
Oh, August, I'm sorry. As of August 1, 2017, the allowance will be $40 per month for a mobile device, smartphone, or $20 per month for a cellphone. This allowance does not constitute, yeah, and the rest of it's un, remains unchanged.
Uh, point of-
Sure.
So I printed out the one from the packet, which says on mine, as of January 20-
Well, they're just-
She just changed it.
Bringing it up to date. That's right. When she made the amendment.
Oh, okay.
Okay. Is everybody else in agreement that that's what the amendment is now? Or that's what the proposal is? We're, we're going to vote on a proposal to change it to that.
I'm going to take care of his first, though, to change-
Yes, that's what we're going to do.
Okay.
Okay, so everybody understands what we're doing here? We're revising the amendment. All those in favor of revising the amendment, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion passes. Now we're at the amendment from Mrs. Hohensie made, seconded by, I believe, by Mr. Kaufman. And it is the blue language, with the changes being August 1, 2017, and the allowances being $40 per month and $20 per month. Everyone in agreement? All those in favor of the amendment, say aye.
Aye.
Roll call on this one? Okay.
Okay. Mrs. Oden?
Yes.
Dr. Murtaughie?
Yes.
Ms. Van Twyver? No. Mr. Hallwell?
Yes.
Mr. Mosier?
No.
Mrs. Ziem, he's not here. Mrs. Hohensie?
Yes.
Mr. Kaufman?
Yes.
Mr. Farrington?
Yes.
Motion passes, three, four, five, six, two.
Six, two?
Mm-hmm.
Sounds right. Okay. So now we're at the main motion, which is to approve, what is this called?
Cellphone policy, DKD.
DKD. As amended, and the amendment as, as we just made. Mr. Hallwell?
Yes, Mr. Donovan, um, has the amount for this been going up 10% a year?
Not that I'm aware of. I mean, I'd be surprised if that were the case. The amount per person has pretty much stayed the same. We might have added a couple of people, but not very many. So that sounds like a high percentage to me, though I haven't checked the numbers, so I can't confirm one of the, one way or the other.
The staff that are listed under eligibility, are all those the current staff that are eligible for cellphones now?
Yes, that's pretty accurate.
And when it says plant operations, that's a pretty wide-ranging number of people, right?
Yeah, there's only plant operations, there's the sort of plant operations management, let's say, so there's probably about eight people, I think.
Um, I have, I have an amendment, but I've just spoken, so if there's any objection, I won't try to make an amendment.
Go ahead.
Um, I move to amend the line that says, "They shall comply with any reasonable request for billing records and usage information," to strike the language that says "and usage information." If I get a second, I'll speak to my rationale.
Second.
Uh, so I can understand verifying that someone has a cellphone, um, but in terms of what they use it for, I just don't think that's any of our business. I, I think it's marginal that it's our business that they have a phone, that they have what their billing records are. Um, so I would, well, I mean, I'll, I'll leave it at that. I mean, it really should be cleaner language, I think.
Okay. Mr. Kaufman, Mrs. Hohensie?
That language was originally, actually, all of the language in that section that Mr. Hallwell was referring to, uh, that's subsequently been, uh, stricken, with the one exception, I'm sorry, um, yeah, at the top of page two, and the very beginning of, bottom of page one and into page two, was originally proposed by Mr. Bolton. In a conversation I had with him, and it was confirmed in an email exchange that went between himself and, uh, some of the principals that were concerned about this. At a subsequent meeting, Mr. Bolton, um, reviewed the language and said the other things can be eliminated, but recommended that this one statement be maintained. So that's how it got there and why it's there.
Mrs. Hohensie, do you have?
Thank you. I, I guess it's just a follow-up of what the attorney said. I, I thought it was, a reasonable request would be in the case of verifying if there was a problem. Um, sometimes phones or records that transactions or something were made. It, it was just, it wasn't anything to, uh, say that people had to, you know, give in their billing all the time. It's just, if there was something that, um, an incident that came about, that he would, they would need to get some information from a cellphone, I think that's what he left in there for. It's a reasonable request at a time of some situation facing the district, probably, you know, litigation of some sort.
Mr. Hallwell?
Um, well, if there were litigation, there's litigation. I mean, so you, you have the right to request all kinds of things in litigation without it having to be in our board policy. I think it, I mean, the whole, I mean, I, I'm, I'm not even sure I'm happy with just removing the "and usage" information, because I really think if you're going to give billing records, billing records have to and from information, um, so I, I withdraw my amendment.
Okay, just as a follow-up.
Sure.
I, I think for certain, some things can be redacted, so you're not giving away personal information, if it was beyond the scope of what the attorney, you know, for example, might need, so I'm glad that you're withdrawing it.
Mrs. Oden?
To be clear, I'm withdrawing it, and I'm not going to support the motion to pass the policy.
Does anyone know, is this in the policy for city employees?
I don't know.
I don't know it that well. I wouldn't want to say the word.
I don't, I'm not sure.
I'm guessing if, if he's, if Attorney Bolton is recommending this be in our policy, I would imagine, can we, can we table until we find out whether this is also in the city policy?
Table anything you want.
No, move to table until we get that clarified.
Motion by Mrs. Oden to table the motion, seconded by Mr. Hallwell. All those in favor of tabling, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed. The motion is tabled. We're back to you, Ms. Van Twyver.
Well, then, the next one is the dash R, since I can't find my papers here, flipping between all this stuff. The next one is DKD dash R, cellphone policy request form.
Is that influenced by the fact that the first one is tabled? Should that second one be also-
I might suggest that.
Just withdraw it for now?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Moving right along.
So we're withdrawing, is that-
Both of them will be referred back to committee?
Well, no, the sec, the first one was tabled.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
You didn't make the second one, so.
Well, someone can make a motion. I guess to table that, too.
I move to table it, to keep them together?
Well, the motion hasn't been made, so there's no reason to table it.
It's not intended to table.
You just don't make the motion, and then you bring it forward if the other one gets-
Fine, thank you. Fine. Uh, the next one is EC-
I was, I was trying to, parliamentary-wise, there was no motion on the table. You can't table something that's not on the table.
Correct.
Okay.
That's correct.
So moving right along to the-
No one made the motion.
So what is the status of this, then? It's going back to committee, and the other one is tabled?
Status is, it's, oh, sorry, can I-
It just exists, it's, it can-
It's, it's, it came out of committee, but did not get presented to the board at this meeting. As the chair, Ms. Van Twyver, can just bring it up, once this one gets taken off the table.
But it's on the agenda.
But it's on the agenda.
It does not require you to make the motion.
Fine. The next one is ECAF.
For many other motions.
The next one is EC, policy ECAF, use of cameras on school buses. Um, the, your, the sentence, "Media will become the property of the school district and will be stored at the office of the superintendent of schools. All media will be destroyed at the conclusion of the school year unless it must be retained due to pending appeals or litigation." These two sentences were struck. So I move the-
Sorry, what was?
Just seconding it, so she can go on to, to discuss it.
You have made a motion? No, no, you, she can explain. She, and, just go ahead, continue.
Well, I mean, I didn't even get a chance to make the motion.
No, no, that's fine. Okay, just, we can continue. You're doing fine. Everything's fine. I just didn't know what the conversation was over here, I was just trying to find out.
I move the adoption of ECAF as amended.
Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Mrs. Hohensie. Uh, is there any discussion of policy ECAF? If not, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion passes.
There was another motion, the wellness, excuse me, there was another, uh, policy on wellness, um, that did not come forward, because there was a, um, question about whether, um, recess before lunch was not included in the changes that were, were recommended by the wellness committee. So it has, will be conducted, it will take that up at the next policy meeting. And there will be no policy meeting for the month of July. I talked with Dr., um-
Mosley?
Mosley, thank you, um, that we would give our superintendent, um, some time to get acclimated to this, to the district, and we will take, do some planning, and we will take it up in August. Next meeting will be in August.
Okay. Thank you. Uh, curriculum evaluation, Dr. Murtaughie?
Yes, uh, thank you.
You're doing well, Dr. Murtaughie. We're, we're monitoring you, you're fine.
Thank you, Mr. President. Uh, we did have a, a very brief meeting of the curriculum and evaluation committee on, uh, June the 19th. I had, uh, not provided sufficient, uh, clarity in the topics that I hoped we would get public comment on, and as a consequence, we had very, very few members of the public at the meeting. And at the recommendation of, uh, Dr. Brown, uh, we basically are going to defer that discussion to a later date, where I will ensure that there are sufficient clarity on the, uh, agenda items to be discussed, it was, with respect to, uh, full-day kindergarten. So, um, the other thing that we discussed, in essence, was, uh, my congratulations again to Dr. Brown on the, uh, full-day kindergarten program. I, I think this is a, a great step forward for, for Nashua. Uh, my interest in the discussion was primarily, what do, uh, parents and, uh, kindergarten teachers expect out of a full-day kindergarten that is not at the Title I schools? So hopefully, we'll, we'll get that. There will no, not be a, a meeting of the curriculum and evaluation committee in July, and I will, um, meet with the new superintendent, and we'll, uh, discuss, uh, you know, what kind of topics would he also like added to that next committee meeting. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Uh, we've already done HR liaison reports, unfinished business, new business. Need a motion to accept grant funds from the National Education Foundation?
Move to accept grant funds from National Education Foundation.
And Mr. Hallwell, seconded by Mrs. Oden. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion passes. I-Ready reading results. Dr. Brown?
Thank you very much. Uh, earlier this year, a couple of board members, including Mr. Hallwell and Mr. Kaufman, had encouraged me to really use the services of Kathy Wilde in a more diagnostic fashion. And I was able to do that. In March, we had money in a dropout prevention grant that we weren't going to be able to use, because of staff we weren't able to hire. And I had talked to Mr. Chopin, and said, "How about we ask the department if we can redirect the money to little people as opposed to big people?" And it would line up with the board's goal regarding the use, regarding getting all kids on grade level by the end of third grade. So that's where the funds came from. And I'm pleased to report to you, I won't go into this detail, I'm sure you've read this before, that we had 270 kids participate. They were identified using their I-Ready scores as kids who were not on grade level. And as you can see here from the stats, uh, they did pretty well. So a lot of the kids, um, moved closer to being on grade level, and on the first page here, you can see that the I-level proficiency data, 143 kids, uh, made significant progress towards being on grade level, and 104 who were below actually finished year on grade level. So I'm really, really pleased with that. Um, it started late in the year, we used teachers who knew the kids, and gave them very targeted intervention, and I'm happy to report to you that it was successful. It was more successful with the second graders than it was with the first graders, and if this pilot continued again, I'd encourage, uh, you folks to take a look at why that is. But again, I'm pleased to share that this initiative helped move more of your kids toward the goal of having all kids on grade level by the end of grade three. Be happy to answer any questions.
Dr. Murtaughie?
Yes, uh, thank you very much, Dr. Brown. I guess the, the thing that's in the back of my mind is something that you, um, actually mentioned, uh, just now. Do you attribute the improvements in reading level to the actual use of I-Ready as a tool to, to monitor the-
improvements in reading level to the actual use of I Ready as a tool to, to monitor the progress that the students are making?
The kids were identified using specific skills that they were missing in I Ready, and those were who, those were who taught Connie, those who were below grade level. Thank you. And that was getting back to some information from Mr. Kaufman and others who had said, we really need to use strategic use of data better. And so that's, that's how we got the data.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Ms. Hall?
So how many, so the number of students that participated was 267. How many students do we have not reading on grade, grade level at, I guess, I don't know whether it's first grade or second grade on this back page?
That would depend by school. I don't have the, the total on the top of my head in terms of how many kids are or are not. Do you know, Mr. Boucher?
I guess, so let me ask the question a different way. Um, there were 104 students who moved to on level. How many would we have anticipated would have moved to on level had we not done this pilot program?
I don't know the answer to that question. Um, I'm not sure with this projected growth model, how many kids are projected to move. Um, and I'm not answering your question well, but I don't, I don't think there's a projected growth level.
So, the kids on grade level decreases every year we go up, right? So, I guess the answer to the question is, no, I'm not sure what the answer to the question is, but it's a good question. If I do say so myself. I mean, I think there's a, probably a way maybe Kathy could, Kathy Wilde could analyze that for us. So I guess what I'm just trying to weed out here is the ones that moved to on level, there's some set of those students that would have moved to on level even if we hadn't done, um, this pilot program, I think, but maybe I'm wrong. Um, so maybe I'll, maybe I'll send this question to Kathy and see if she can.
Are you, are you suggesting that we are still confused but at a much higher level now?
I'm much more encouraged by the confusion that we have.
Good, good. Ms. Kaufman.
Thanks. Mr. Halliwell, may I ask you to look at the last two columns on the back sheet on the far right? Yeah, but on the reverse. It looks like this.
This is the reverse, because that's the second.
I have a three-page document. I'm looking at the third, the second side of the third page.
The one that says first grade or, oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, got it, this one?
Yes.
Okay.
Is your question answered by those two columns?
They, it may be, Ms. Kaufman, since it's the first time I'm seeing this page.
Okay.
Thank you.
So I'll give him a second to look because I think there might be a clue there. I'm not for sure. I'm not certain myself.
Look, everybody's studying.
Well, may I say in the meantime, I am so thrilled that we were able to take care of the, you know, leverage the work that Kathy and the folks over there are doing. This is a tangible result which is, really warms my heart to know that when we can identify the right kids for the right reason and diagnosically say, well, you know, you can't multiply two numbers. Let me, let me show you how to do that again, that they respond to that kind of tutoring, remediation, intervention, whatever word we want to call it, and we got really strong and positive results. So I'm going to, giving some cover to Mr. Halliwell. I do want to ask a question of Dr. Brown if I can. We talked about, this was as a result of the dropout prevention grant, we were able to redirect funds. So, as a pilot program, I would make the, the point that it appears to be very successful and something worth evaluating for continuation along with the other caveats that go with it. But if we were to, if we were to institutionalize some kind of remediation like that, what kind of resources would we need? Do we have the resources? They can be redirected? Because now we, we know the right kids to pick. So now we just get them to work with the interventionists that we already have? We have what? Um, I don't remember how many, but it was over $3 million worth of interventionists. So do we have the resources? We just now need to redirect these kids as we know how to select them now to those interventionists?
Those are good questions, and I think what I'd recommend is you have a, a board dialogue around this topic. Um, this is one way of getting at kids who are not at grade level, more successful with the second graders than it was with the first graders. And I want to probe that and, you know, why was that the case? Um, I think you need to take a look at where your first graders are coming in, and as you go forward with all-day kindergarten, what those benchmarks are and how they may change. Um, I, I would expect a very positive change there. So, you know, the question of targeting kids, putting them with their teachers, giving some extra support to them, we started in March, you know, was that the right time of the year? Would, would the gains have improved, to get back to Mr. Halliwell's question, if this had gone all year long? I don't know. Um, do you do it for an intense targeted period and then kids test out? Um, so I think that's part of a bigger conversation you would like to have about this. I'm just really pleased. It was a, a mini effort late in the year. We had some extra money. I didn't want to lose it, and I think it bear bore some proof for you folks.
If I could, I, I, I'm very encouraged by it too. I, I, I agree that we need to understand it a little better before we expand the program, but I think it certainly is worth, uh, looking at. I'm curious about the difference between first and second graders and, and those sorts of things. But I think that, uh, it, it does show a lot of, uh, seem to show a lot of promise, and then it becomes a question of how you implement it, what time of the year is the best time of the year and all of that. But, uh, thank you for doing this. I think this is great. Ms. Halliwell?
So I, I don't know whether we can get Kathy Wilde in here over the summer. I guess my thought is I would like to make sure that whatever level this pilot was at, that maybe if there are funds available, that we look at continuing the pilot into next year, and I just fear if we wait until September or October, then it won't happen. When, when was the period of intervention? So?
March until the end of the year. I think it started March 13th.
Okay. So I guess in that sense, we could do something similar next year and still have time to think about it. Okay. And to answer, Mr., thank you, Ms. Kaufman, for pointing out that chart. So I think you're right in that it might be in there, but it's not a slam dunk. So I, I think we need to look at it a little more.
I think if we look at it more, we may find that mid-year would be a good time or, but I, I think this is a great terrific start to, uh, finding a way to address that third grade thing. Um, anything else on that? And, well, we had something else. Oh, yes. Status report for full-day kindergarten. Mr. Boucher?
I felt it important that we provide you with a summary before we depart so that, uh, that the incoming team has some idea of what's gone into the planning, what some of the issues have been, and what some of the outstanding, uh, questions may be as you move forward to implementation. Been tracking the enrollments, as you can see, since early March. Um, the enrollments, in my opinion, are lagging, uh, and that may be related to the length of time required to execute a, a completed budget, um, here in Nashua. Um, last week, the announcement was the budget is approved and full-day kindergarten is in. But as was mentioned earlier, by that point, a lot of families have made their plans for the coming year. I have, um, full confidence that the actual numbers will exceed 700 by the time that, that the year opens. Uh, I don't think you'll approach the 800 threshold until, uh, the next school year. Um, so I think that'll be something to, to watch very closely. Uh, something that's, um, of interest to me, that the, uh, enrollments at the title schools, which have the larger numbers in kindergarten historically, are lagging in all schools but one, and that was Led Street. So I think a large number of people must have come to register because they heard that Mr. Frederickson was there at Led Street in the last, the last few weeks. As far as staffing, recognizing that the enrollment was lagging, we felt comfortable dropping the total number of sections of kindergarten from 42 to 40. Um, that was actually to the district's benefit because we did have a couple of locations where enrollments were bubbling up to fairly high numbers. Uh, we had a first grade at Amherst Street that was going to be up in the mid twenties or higher, which we didn't find acceptable. So we repurposed one of those FTEs for that location. And likewise, at New Surles, there was a sudden dramatic increase in second grade as registered for next year. So those two, two positions were well-used to help control class sizes at those locations. Um, principals recently met to work on the schedule for specialists for this year, and the best information out of that session was that principals feel that they can cover the specialists, specialists meaning music, art, and PE with existing staff. That held true for the TAs as well. Um, we'll take their word for that now. I would suspect that once the, you know, the students arrive and this, and the schedule is actually in operation, they may revisit that. But for now, they seem to be comfortable with the staffing that they have. Uh, for staff development, I'm pleased to report that last Thursday, we had a very well-attended full-day training session for all-day kindergarten. Thirty-six of the 40 teachers attended, which I thought was an outstanding turnout for that day. Um, Joe, Jackie Okunak and Jen Grantham led, uh, the planning and the, um, led the discussions and the, and the sessions for that day. And they reported that there was a high energy level and people were really into the topic of, of full-day K. And they felt it was very productive and they would encourage us that as the year unfolds and the implementation unfolds, that we find more opportunities to get those folks together, talk about curriculum and purposeful play and some of the other topics that they talked about last week. Uh, as far as furniture and supplies, you've seen, I think you've seen this before. Um, there would be the need for some furniture, which Mr. Donovan has identified in the, uh, as coming out of the central office budget. There are also some supply items, basically curriculum supply items. Um, those items would be purchased out of the, pretty comfortably out of the, the curriculum budget. So that's not a big-ticket issue there. As was mentioned earlier, outstanding issues include the need for paraprofessional support. Um, not only in terms of coverage of the kindergarten classes, we've talked about the average coverage being a half a para per kindergarten class. Uh, so there, there would be additional headcount probably needed for, for pairs to accomplish that. The other thing that I would urge you to keep a close eye on is equity across the buildings. Finding that the ratio of para coverage in kindergartens is not a constant across the district. So that's something you might want to pay attention to. Uh, in, in the final, in, uh, elementary principals' meeting for the year, we, uh, agreed that the instructional day for kindergarten would be set at six hours and 10 minutes. Um, but the principals asked for, and, and we recommend that they be granted the flexibility to decide when that day begins and ends because, uh, running it all-day K in one location, um, let's pick, uh, Sunset Heights, for example, would be much different than running it at bicentennial with 80 kindergarteners arriving at bicentennial in the morning, 80 parents dropping off those 80 students. Traffic is a huge issue. It's already an issue at bicentennial if you've ever been there in the morning. Uh, so they need the flexibility to, to, to move those starting and end times to help with the, the logistics at the locations. And I had mentioned a moment ago, the PD for kindergarten teachers, um, very, very important. Um, they had lots of very good discussions about scheduling the other day, and they need more time to spend together to explore those issues and see how it's being done at various buildings so they can share their best practices. I think that's about everything that's in here. I'd be happy to answer any questions. Ms. Halliwell?
So under your current forecast, I'm not sure when that was created, but so Ledge, you have 77, but it is the 91, as you pointed out with the mad rush to.
Yep.
To there. And then main principal's at 61 and New Surles is at 43. So, just.
What we've done in, what we've done in a case, for example, at Broad Street, um, we've encouraged the principals to cap to their capacity. So at Broad Street, for example, uh, the number had actually bubbled up to 47, where they have a capacity of 40. So what they have done is they're going to shift seven of those kids over to Birch Hill per kindergarten because Birch Hill had the flexibility. Uh, if you look up and down the list, a place like Charlotte, they have, so that's some flexibility. Uh, Dr. Crisp, so that's some flexibility and so on. So we'll be, we, we're encouraging principals to collaborate to ensure that they don't exceed the threshold, uh, in their individual schools.
So have the, are the seven included in the 51 now that sits at Birch Hill?
Yes.
Can, you, you are the person who's going to replace you eventually. Can we get a number that says how many are from each school and then how many are being shifted?
The principals will be very, very eager to provide that information because, because the next year, those kids go to first grade. So that'll be tracked very closely. And, and actually, that's been a historical practice in the district. They have moved kids around to keep the numbers, um, reasonable across the district.
Right.
Dr. Murataki.
Thank you.
Yes, thank you. A couple of things. Uh, as to the most recent discussion about shifting, so is that shifting done on a first-come, first-served basis? Or is it more complicated than that?
It's slightly more complicated than that because, um, some kindergartens, arriving kindergarten students aren't IEPs, and you want to make sure that they're arriving in a building where the necessary services are available. So, um, so a veteran principal like, uh, Mr. Lucas at Birch Hill, um, plans for that. He knows that he's going to have X number of IEP students arriving kindergarten, so he sort of preserves those slots, and he shared that practice with other principals as, as well. Uh, that's, that's something that should be followed across the district.
And if the incoming student has siblings in that school already, does that also reserve a spot for that child?
Uh, I can't answer that with confidence. Um, I'm sure that they have dealt with that situation in the past though.
Okay. And by the way, thank you very much for providing that final sheet, which was the Summer Full Day Kindergarten Institute Agenda. I found that very interesting.
Thank you.
That's the, that's the last slide that looked like that. I particularly liked that fun in kindergarten topic. It was a half-hour discussion.
Yeah, we, in addition to the, to the discussion, we also provided them with a book on purposeful play, and, uh, that was well-received by the group as well.
That's what I heard. I've been getting feedback. It was, uh, apparently a, a good institute. Thank you very much. Ms. Kaufman?
Hi, Mr. Boucher. I have a question, excuse me, relative to the capacity, uh, that you have. Is this based on, um, essentially 20 children per classroom? I'm just guessing.
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you.
Anyone else? I just, uh, would say I, uh, happened to encounter one of our, uh, kindergarten teachers the other day after they'd had their meeting, and she was very enthusiastic about how it had gone on, said it was a really good experience for her, and so it's, uh, well-reported. And the other thing, well, no. Anyone else on the kindergarten? That bring us to the close of business? We have no public.
Board member comments?
Board member comments. We'll start over here with Mr. Mosier.
Well, thank you. You know, uh, being at the weather has, uh, been very agreeable, and it makes it, uh, a little more pleasant to get out in the evening and, and tend to business. But, uh, I really am going to, I miss seeing, uh, Dr. Brown and, uh, having her input into the, what's going on in the district and what she has planned. But, uh, like I said, I wish her well. And, uh, I do hope that, uh, once in a while, if she can kind of drag herself out of her main, that she'll come down and visit with us. At least, uh, say hello and we'll have a, a little chocolate or something in between. Thank you very much for your service to us. You're going to be missed. Thank you.
Ms. Oden?
Yes, um, first, I want to commend the high school staff, the administrators and teachers and all the students that graduated. Uh, I thought graduation was done very, very nicely. I, I. I especially appreciate how the teachers line up and say goodbye to the students, and the students have a chance to thank them. It was just very, very nice. To Mr. Boucher and Superintendent Brown, best of luck. If you have some surgery, I hope all goes well, and good luck in your new endeavor or your new placement there. Thank you.
Ms. Hines?
Thank you. I'd also like to wish best of luck to our administrators that are leaving. Hopefully, you'll have some interesting places to dig down into next year. And I wanted to thank Mr. Boucher for the kindergarten report. I'm glad that Dr. Murataki is going to schedule another talk on kindergarten, because I would like to feel more comfortable knowing the difference between a half-day and a full day, so we don't set up our kids for failure if they're only there half the day. But I looked around, and there were two things that I noticed in nearby districts. In Bedford, they have a separate kindergarten program based on ages. They call it the young fives. If they're up to four or five months younger than the older fives, they separate them. And I know there's a lot of maturity and cognitive development that goes on in that stage, that that might be something that would be interesting to consider. I don't know if the district does it or not. I also spoke to some board members in Manchester on their curriculum and instruction committee, and they had a very productive discussion on kindergarten last month, and I'd just like to read two short quotes. First was from a teacher. She's new to Manchester. She said, "This is my second year. My kindergarten teachers weren't happy last year. There was a lot of discipline problems. My principal and I talked about kindergarten and play and how important it is to bring back activities that are developmentally appropriate for five-year-old children, because sitting in a classroom with some of those standards, if you think they're going to teach this, and it's a worksheet after worksheet, it's not appropriate." And the principal from that school, that elementary school, she said, and this was pretty interesting, "Last year, honestly, we had 50 kindergarten referrals. We had them every single day. These are discipline problems. Multiple repeat offenders the same day, maybe four or five times a day. This year, we haven't had a kindergarten referral, and they incorporated a lot more play." So, I think that it's interesting to learn from others, and I hope that we can dig deeper into making sure that kindergarten is rolled out very well in our district. Thank you.
Ms. Kaufman?
Thank you. Like Ms. Oden, I'd like to congratulate our graduates. Graduation was a lot of fun. There was a lot of great and, dare I say, playful energy in the room. I want to thank the parents and the students' families for coming out. You filled the auditorium this year, really did a great job. I appreciate that you were allowed, and I think it really just helped to make it a bigger and more productive event. I, too, would like to thank our exiting administrators, Dr. Brown, Mr. Fredrickson, who's not here tonight, and Mr. Boucher for the work you've done with us. And I look forward to Dr. Mosley and his team joining us in the very near future. I'm going to just leave it that way. I had some other comments I was going to make, but I'll choose not to say them right now. Thank you.
Okay. Mr. Hollowell?
Yeah, so I think a little more than a year ago, when we were looking to replace our superintendent and two assistant superintendents, I think there was a lot of angst on the board as to how that was all going to work, particularly since we were hiring interim administrators in almost every case from the upper level down to some other lower-level positions. I don't think we could have found three better people to fill those positions for this past year. I've been impressed by Mr. Fredrickson. I think every time we asked Mr. Fredrickson to go one more level up, he always did, and that includes this year, where he and Mr. Boucher ended up being kindergarten or elementary school principals and vice principals for the last month and a half, although I think they kind of enjoyed it, is my impression. So, that's good, actually, and I'm glad that was able to end on a happy note. It's been a tough year. I appreciate what you stood up for. I appreciate the input that you gave on behalf of the staff and administrators through this entire year. Couldn't have been easy at times. So, I appreciate all that you've done. I wish you the best as you go forward. I'm sure, I am sure, you will be successful wherever you go. Thank you.
God, I hate to follow him. Ms. Van Twyber? Oh, I'm sorry. Dr. Murataki?
Thank you, Mr. President. First, going to the graduations that we've had this year, including the two most recent ones, National High South and North, I would like to thank the faculty, the administration, and especially the parents and families that supported these students and got them to that point. I am very proud of these students, and I'm also proud of you. Being an Army veteran, I also honor those graduates who essentially planned to go and do a stint in the military. You might even make it a career, but in any case, I salute you. Best wishes. I've already commented on my thoughts of the superintendent. These high thoughts also extend to Mr. Boucher and Mr. Fredrickson. I am very, very happy to have been able to work with you. You have my prayers and my blessings as you move forward. So, thank you very much for all you've done.
Not your turn? Yeah, we're getting around to you. I have to wait to last.
It's hard, after all these people have spoken, to say something new, because last year, when we started the year with three new interim people, I think that we have ended up a lot, 10 times what I thought we would have done. It's been a remarkable year, and I think we've, because of you three people, we've pulled through it just remarkably well, and I thank you so much for it. I'm going to miss all three of you. I really enjoyed working with Mr. Fredrickson on policy and look forward to our new superintendences and wishing them well for it. I hope that you all have a wonderful summer and that your new endeavors will be very successful also. Thank you for your service.
Before I go there, there's one thing that I don't want to dwell on, but I think that we need to... It's important to mention, at the end of our last meeting last week, there was an accusation made about manipulation of data and things. And then there was a correction published the following Saturday, but it ended up on the back page, and that's the way the news works. But I feel it's important that since the topic originated here at this boardroom and that there are a lot of people who watch this, and there are fewer... No offense to The Telegraph, but there seem to be fewer and fewer people reading The Telegraph. I think it's important to let everyone know that that accusation was withdrawn.
Oh, no, it wasn't. Sorry.
You've had your talk. Mr. Kaufman, please.
I'm sorry I didn't read what I had prepared, what it addressed.
Okay, well, you had your chance, Mr. Kaufman. If you would please let me finish. Thank you.
The next meeting.
Okay, so... Mr. Kaufman, you are out of order. Thank you. Mr. Kaufman?
And I have the evidence that no one was interested in reviewing or seeing...
I apologize to the two administrators, the three administrators here. Ms. Hollowell, you make it hard to follow you. We were looking for interim people, found ourselves in a bad situation, and we wanted... I know some of us were concerned that we would be able to find somebody who could come in and keep the ship going, and we didn't want somebody to come in and warm the seat, and we didn't get that in any of the three seats. And I should mention, I don't think we mentioned earlier, that Mr. Fredrickson isn't here this evening. He had a family commitment that didn't allow him to be here. But you've all left a very positive mark on our district, showing us the way to full-day kindergarten and so many other things you've done. I've enjoyed working with all three of you immensely. I've found you to be very professional educators, people of great character and integrity. It's been hard times, but it's been fun. I've had lots of chuckles along the way, and I certainly do wish you all three the best in your coming endeavors, whatever they may be. So, we don't have a need for a public session. The next meeting will be in July, July 10th, here at the boardroom, and I think we need a motion for adjournment. Ms. Hollowell, do you have one?
During.
Seconded by Mrs. Oden. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, oppose? Motion passes. We are adjourned at 8:41.